Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Dan.
Okay, we are going to take some items out of order this morning, uh, this evening. We only have four members here right now when we do our special permits on the first two items on the agenda, so we're gonna jump to item number four at this time. Site plan modification request thirteen thirty-four to thirteen sixty-six Park Street, map eighty-six lot sixty-five. The applicant Panera Bread requested a modification for the board to consider reducing three-year landscaping bond to a one-year landscape bond. In addition, they request the board accept a letter of credit instead of a cash bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Ronald, uh, Ronnie Hart is on for representing the Panera Bread.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ronnie.
Yeah, we recently added the drive-through retrofit to the location and when we were speaking with the landlord about our lease, um, you know, we found out that obviously we do not maintain the landscaping area. The landlord is responsible for that. Looking back at the history, the, from my understanding, the center does not have a irrigation system, um, so there was nothing we could tie into even if we wanted to irrigate it. Um, so that's why we're requesting, because since we do not have control over the maintenance, uh, we're requesting, um, it be reduced from three years to one year. And then the, um, letter of credit is, um, a traditionally what we're used to using instead of a cash bond.
The, the town won't accept a letter of credit, it has to be a cash bond, so that, that part of it is off the table. It's just tradition in the town, it's through the past history, so, um, we will not accept that. As far as the three-year to one-year, um, I understand your concern that it's the Panera, it's, um, the center's responsibility, but that can't be our responsibility. I don't recall why we ended up with a three-year bond. Normally it is a one-year bond, so I would think that, um, we could revisit that as a board and see if they have any, any other issues with maybe reducing that to a one-year bond. But, um, as far as it being, whether it's cash or a letter of credit or line of credit would have to be a cash bond.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, in the decision, it's because they didn't have irrigation, but there's other projects that didn't, don't have irrigation that we still accept the one-year bond on.
There's projects all over town that don't have irrigation.
And so, as, as far as I'm concerned, I have no objection and recommend for the one-year bond, because when we review it in one year, case in point, like the Cumberland Farms, you know, they had, they actually had irrigation and didn't turn it on and, and, you know, sixty, seventy percent of their plants are gone. They had to replant and we kept the bond for a year. So, I, I would recommend the, uh, reducing it to one year. I, I have no issues with that.
I've got no issue with that. Does anybody else have any comments or any issues?
My question would just be, when does that year start? Would that start as of today, or is it already ongoing, or?
We haven't closed the project out, so it's, they, they still, they still have a few items left. They've replanted and done the additional plantings and the, if you've driven by, some of the fencing for the dumpster is up. It's the, the, the front's not up, we don't have the ASBilt yet. So, it's, it's from when we, when we fully accept the project. So, I imagine it will probably be, you know, by the time they get their ASBilt, it'll be probably sometime after the first of the year. Uh, you know, they should be pretty close to then having their surveyor, um, go out and do the ASBilt. And Ronnie could probably talk to that.
Yeah, right now, um, our schedule is, because of the holidays, um, our schedule is to have everything to the city, um, by the middle of January.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the one-year begins right?
Yes.
When they sign, when you sign off on it?
Right.
Correct. Yeah, so I assume the one-year is probably, yeah, February first, something like that.
It's already been in for a year, I think.
Hmm?
It's already been planted for a year.
It's already been planted for probably, it's at least through one, if not?
Right.
Two, two growing seasons.
There were supplemental plants put in this year, though.
Yeah, there were some supplemental plants put in this year, additional, but a vast majority of it, uh, has gone through at least a growing season.
Uh, the only comment that I have is actually two comments. One is, I see that the dumpster fence is starting to be installed and the gates aren't put in yet.
Yeah, they're just, they're still, they're in the process of completing that.
Yeah. And the other thing, and this is a small matter, we had previously talked about the welcome to Stoughton sign being raised. Was, they installed it, but it wasn't put up high enough. Is that part of the condition?
Ronnie, you and I can talk about raising the sign.
Yeah, that's the first thing I'm hearing about, this, uh, raising the sign.
Okay.
But we can, we can figure that out.
Okay. I, I can work with them on raising the sign. Actually, every single one of those practically welcome to Stoughton signs that we have have to be raised.
I think we should go back to the original person that put them in.
Yeah.
I didn't build the sign.
That's all I have.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to, uh, for the bond period to, to be one year, starting at the end of completion.
But still require the cash bond.
Require a cash bond. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, well, we have five members. We can go back to, uh, item number two on the list. Continued public hearing will be held on the petition of the applicant filed of bills in Main String, 460 Belmont Ave, Brockton, Mass., represented by the Clerk Burke and Soller and Associates, Inc., 1266 Frenchport Parkway, Suite 401 Quincy, for a site plan review under section ten point seven to convert the existing motel managers' building and existing single family into a twenty-four efficiency unit apartment complex. The applicant is requesting a waiver to section four point one point two, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations to allow existing four-foot side yard setback to remain, section six point one point six, Table of Off-Street Parking in section six point one point seven point one nine, to reduce required parking spaces from twenty-four to thirteen, and to allow a two-way drive aisle to be reduced from twenty-four to twenty. The project is located at nineteen nineteen Washington Street, assesses map sixty lot fifteen, General Business Zoning District. That was the original, um, advertisement. Since then, the parking has been changed and it's in the decision for what the difference in the parking is, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you asked me, write a decision, i- the decision does, is for the, the site plan, it specifically lists the date that, that showed the increased additional parking. So, I'm recommending, at your direction, I went through and did the findings, uh, the decision, there's the general, um, there's the fourteen general conditions, which are pretty standard, and then the special conditions, uh, one of the, the main special condition was number one, that the decision of planning board is based on the applicant's statement that they will provide the educational aspects required under the Dover Amendment. If it is found that educational benefit is not being enacted by the applicant, then the decision of the planning board shall be rescinded and will be in violation of zoning. That was the, the main special condition that you wanted, and then a lot of, and several of the others are standard special conditions. So, with that, um, and I have emailed this, uh, prior to the applicant, um, so, uh, they can, if they want to say anything, they can, but the, I did the decision, uh, per the request of the board.
So, we have two special permits, or one special permit, and then just a site plan review, is that where we're at?
Is there under?
It's special, oh, it is, um, yeah, so a special permit for the parking spaces.
And the, uh, if, if it's on page four of the decision, the, the special permit waiver was for the, um, the parking and loading, their forty-eight spaces. It's to twenty-five spaces, and then the, um, the four-foot, uh, side yard setback and the two, two issues for parking were the parking spaces, which you're gonna reduce, which the recommendation is reduced to twenty-five, to allow the twenty-foot drive aisle around the side due to the existing conditions. And then there's the table dimension one for the, the existing setback of four feet, which the applicant applied for, I, was, you know, so.
Okay, so, I'm gonna do a separate vote on each special permit. So, right now, the special permit under section six point one point nine and four point one point, I said, six point one point nine, the waiver from forty-eight parking spaces down to twenty-five parking spaces, do I have a motion to, for that particular waiver?
Motion to accept.
We have a second.
Anybody?
Anybody?
I have one question on that. It was a two-legged questions?
No, I'd like to have a second, then we can discuss it.
Okay, second, I'll say.
All right, if there's any discussion, we go ahead.
All right, one of the, the things that I thought about afterwards is, when it came up about the twenty-five parking spaces, they were including two of the parking spaces
In the garage, yes.
And?
Those are probably for employees, if you really wanna, is, is my rec, is, is my, is kinda where they discussed it.
All right, that's, that's fine, but are they including two parking spaces in front of the garage?
No, they're not including parking in front of the garage.
Okay.
They're only including the garage.
So, technically, you could have your two parking spaces in front of the garage, and the garage is a bonus.
Yes, you could.
Okay, because, and the reason why I asked a question is, at some point, who's to say that the garage does not become like everybody else's garage, where?
It's a storage unit?
Exactly.
Right, and they, they still have parking in front of the garage, so they could still meet the twenty-five spaces.
Well, that's why I want to be clear on that, because, I mean, it very well could be if they include, you know, then they'd be down to twenty-three.
Right.
So, that's my only comment on that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I have a motion, I have a second. Can we have a vote on that particular special, um, permit? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Votes four to one.
Okay.
So, special permit number two is, um, section four point one point two, the table of dimension-
No, it's also the six point nine one is the, the drive aisle.
I'm sorry, then I did it the wrong way, so, uh, we just voted on the four point one point two, then.
No, you, so, was, was it, was it your intention, Mr. Chairman, to vote the special permit for the six, six point nine point one?
Yes.
Off-street parking spaces and the twenty feet?
Yes, my, my fault, yes, yes.
Okay, maybe clarify if that's the, if that was the-
Clarify, okay, the vote is, we're gonna go to twenty-five spaces and the twenty-foot drive aisle.
Does that change any votes?
Could I have another vote, another round of votes on that, then, please?
Motion to approve the, um, the parking spaces.
And the twenty-foot drive-by.
And the, and the twenty-foot.
Do you want to take that separately, the twenty-foot?
No, it's, it's under one section.
Same, it's one section.
Which brings up, I have another question on the twenty-foot drive-by, and when I went down to look at the property, I see that pole is used for power supply coming in. My question would be, is if they go to changing from a hotel to a living quarters, increase the amount electrical service, if that pole gets moved, would that widen that driveway?
The pole is an obstacle. If it wasn't there, it, it could provide, uh, wider access. I'm not sure if it's continuous, though, um, through that entire drive aisle, though.
Yeah, it's just that one section.
Yeah.
And, and-
Like I said, I walked the property, and what I did was, I saw the pole coming in, and at that part of the building, I saw where they have their power entering the building, and they have distribution boxes, whatever. So, if they were to upgrade, put a larger transformer, or whatever, would they, would, ever source, force them to move that to someplace else? So, if the pole was to be removed, I'd like to see that go to the full width, but, if, to move the pole for the sake of moving it, it's not worth it, I agree.
Yeah.
I guess the only thing we do right now is vote on the existing conditions and their plans that they have. If their plans are gonna change at some point in time, they're, they're required to come back before us anyway.
Okay, then I'm fine with that.
I have one question about the twenty-foot.
Go ahead.
Is it gonna be marked, there's no parking, is there an issue with fire trucks being?
There's, there's no parking anywhere on those, it's just in the parking spaces.
Okay, so, you, it, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, can we retake the vote on six point, six point one, it's written two different ways here, six point nine point one or six point one point nine? First sentence says six point one point nine, and then it says six point nine, six point nine point one.
It's actually six point one point nine, that's actually a, an error on mine.
So, for section six point one point nine, which encompasses reduction of forty-eight spaces to twenty-five spaces and allows for the twenty-foot drive aisle, can I have another vote on that, please?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Have a full vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Did you say no? I said no, too, so that's not enough for a special permit.
I have, I obviously, yes, so we have a three to two vote at this point in time. So, it's, is there something else, Richard, that can be done to be that, or is the, you just do not want the reduction of parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. That's, so that particular one will get denied at this point in time. There's no, nothing else I can do with a special permit, unless you have another option to do that.
I would need findings on why we denied it.
Okay. So, the findings on what we've denied, according to Mr. Terry, is he's looking to maintain the, uh, Mr. Terry, are you looking to maintain the, according to the amount of parking spaces at the forty-eight, or are you looking, what is the, the reason for the denial of the special permit? Paul also, I'm gonna have to have something.
Mic on.
Well-
Mic on. Turn your mic on.
Richard.
Can you all hear me now?
Yep.
In an earlier meeting, the gentleman sitting with the blue jacket on said that, that he would be willing to keep the parking spaces, and I think the last meeting you were here.
The previous meeting was that, um, they were gonna keep the parking spaces if it was at that point in time, they thought it was twenty-five parking spaces to reduce to thirteen, and they said they were gonna keep the twenty-five, which is what they've stated they would do, the keeping the twenty-five. What happened was, pre, since that point in time, we realized that the, um, zoning they were requiring, they were using was a motel zoning, while it's not a motel anymore, it's actually an apartment building, so instead of requiring one space per unit, it requires two spaces per unit.
Yeah.
So, that's why it ended up going to the forty-eight, and that's why now the reduction goes from forty-eight to the twenty-five, which was what we're, which is what was stated, basically going back to what they said they would do, which is the twenty-five.
Thank you for the clarification. I will change my vote to yes. Thank you.
Paul?
I'll stay in the same.
Okay. So, then we do have a four to one vote.
Four to one vote.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. On the special permit, section four point one point two, the Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, um, we're allowing, their request is to allow a five, a four-foot side yard setback due to where the existing building and the side lot is. Can I have a motion to, um, to, uh, for this special permit?
Motion to accept the four-foot side yard setback.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Five to zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we, um, conclude this meeting, I have a question regarding the Dover Amendment. It says here that, um, if they do not, um, provide educational services, then they'll be in violation of the zoning bylaw. My question is, who's to determine whether they're in compliance or not?
The zoning officer in the town.
I'm sorry?
The zoning officer in the town.
Okay, thank you.
That's the, that's the, that's what, that's what the law states, nothing I can do about that.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, that was all the votes we needed to take.
For the site plan?
Hmm? Yeah, the, we need a site plan review, so, can I have a motion on the, um, site plan review that does any, all the, uh, work and everything that we've asked to have done is, is in compliance? Anybody give me a motion on that?
I'll take a motion to accept.
Accept the site plan review?
Yep.
Have a second on that, from anybody?
Second.
And I'm gonna vote on that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes? Five to nothing. Very good, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Bart.
Item number three on the agenda, continued public hearing will be held, a petition of applicant Seventh Realty LLC, 400 Washington Street, Westwood, Mass., represented by Barry O'Quinn, 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass., for site plan review under section ten point six point two, for proposed development of two thousand fifty square feet Dunkin' Donuts with drive-through and twenty-eight hundred square feet retail building with associated parking, landscaping, and drainage improvements. Special permit waivers under six point one point seven, nine and sixteen, and six point one point nine off-street parking and loading requirements to allow parking within the front setback within five feet of the property line, and section six point four point six, one and two, and six point four point nine standards of landscaping to not provide building foundation plantings or landscape islands with parking area have been requested. The project is located at one twenty Sharon Street, assesses map three lots one twenty-two and one twenty-three in GB, General Business Zoning District.
Mr. Chairman, you, at the hearing, asked that I present a, um, write a, a section of findings for the project.
Yes, please.
I have presented that to the board, um, the, I've identified the, they've made all, all revisions and changes satisfactory to the, uh, Engineering and Planning Department. I, uh, on, on page four of the, of the, uh, decision, are the specific waivers and findings that we've recommended, and recommending approval for the board, and, uh, the applicant, the project would be subject to the, uh, general conditions, one through fourteen, and special conditions, one through six, as identified in the, in the findings and decisions, and I'm here to answer any questions, and I guess the applicant would be, too. There's no plans.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking for the plans, I have the right one.
No, the plans are already looked, reviewed, they were just minor revisions.
Okay. I'm trying to remind myself where we, I'm sorry.
You, I can put them up on the screen, if you'd like, no?
I can see what I'm looking at.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name's Nicole Langley with-
Nicole, you gotta put it closer to you.
Oh, sorry. Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Nicole Langley with High Point Engineering. If the board chooses, I can go over some of the changes that we made to the plan since we were here last time, um, through working with both, uh, Mr. Horstfall and Mr. Roth, um, to the changes that we discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'd just like to go over how we, the, um, the location, I'm sorry, the location of how we were running the drive-through around, I remember that was part of what we were doing, you had spaces that were cutting into the drive-through, and you've changed that area now?
We did, yeah, so, um, if you can see on this color plan, um, those three spaces were over in this area, off of the drive-through lane. We relocated the outdoor patio from the front of the building to the side of the building, the north side, um, added some, um, landscape features between the patio and the drive-through lane. We extended the, um, queue lengths entering the, um, the site, so you can get about two to three cars, and then they would enter into this area where it would split into a bypass lane, um, or the actual drive-through lane.
With the spaces in the front, I don't remember that we discussed it, but we should have curb stops and boulders in the front?
There are, um, bollards, so there's a curb stop in the handicap space, and then there's a bollard in each of the other spaces.
Is that a raised sidewalk, or is it flat?
Um, it's a flush sidewalk only in, in this location, and the rest has a curb.
What separates the, uh, outdoor patio from the drive-through? Is there a fence?
It's a four-foot-high fence.
Well, there's some sort of something there.
Yes.
And the same provisions are for the other building, with, starts the boulders and the, and the curb stops?
Yes, there's bollards along these front spaces and in the back near the, to protect the building from the dumpster pickup. We know.
Is there a transformer on the property?
There's an existing transformer in this location, and we are proposing a second transformer in this location for the second building.
Those would be protected with bollards as well.
Those are protected with bollards, there's existing bollards here, we're showing proposed bollards around that pad.
Yeah, it's been a while, because it was a couple weeks ago that we had the drawings in front of us.
Yeah.
Just to refresh.
No, I'm sorry, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
I actually have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
In the last meeting, I brought up the fact that, uh, for each building, you only have one dumpster, and what happens is that generally that would be for trash, there's no dumpster for recycled materials such as cardboard or anything to be recycled.
So, um, since the last meeting, we took your comment into consideration, we expanded the size of the dumpster pad, which would allow for a separate recyclable dumpster adjacent to the, um, trash waste.
Okay, and the other thing is, uh, I did walk your property, um, earlier this week, and what I noticed is, the fence that's by the Dunkin' Donuts section, uh, there's a fence up on top of the wall?
Yes.
And that's in need of repair?
Okay.
Okay, and then if you look at the fence on the east side, that runs from street all the way back?
Along this area.
Yeah, that's, that's in very sad shape, and, uh, I believe it's on your property?
Yeah, we're actually proposing to replace the entire fence?
Okay.
On this side, and bring it around to the retaining wall, and then a new fence on this side as well.
Okay, because on, what you just pointed to on the west side, uh, there's a lot of shrubbery there?
Mm-hmm.
And it seems to have filled in quite well, so, um, you know, I, are we requiring?
Yeah, the fence would need to be put there. Commercial prop, yes, that would be one of the requirements we have, is that fence in that location.
Okay. And, like I said, the dumpster in the, and in the back section there, we're proposing a second, no, the second, uh, transformer?
Yes.
Okay, along that edge there, there's no fence there, it's all wooded area?
Correct.
And, looks like there's a lot of trash there.
She said she was putting a fence in the area.
There's gonna be a, we're proposing a fence right here, this is, will be a new fence that'll tie into the retaining wall.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If, Cole, if I remember correctly, one of the neighbors had asked about a higher fence that was in that area, and we had discussed it briefly?
Yeah, it was up in here, um, if you look at the, the revised plans that we submitted, they show that fence to be removed within the limits of the property.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody?
I would just like to be reassured by you that the traffic flow, when they're ordering and where they're moving to get their, whatever, you know, however it flows there?
Yep.
That you've got adequate, uh, space there for someone to go around it?
Yes.
That the, that people waiting are not gonna be blocking off that, that first or second space that's in front of the building. I think I asked you the last time what your, uh, if you had calculations of how many cars would be lined up during certain peak hours of the day, and, um, I don't think that was appropriately answered. I see what happens at a lot of these- I see what happens at a lot of these Dunkin' Donuts, the lines get notoriously long and cause issues, and that is a very tight space in there, so I just wanna be assured with your calculations, if you have them, that that has all been accounted for.
So, I can tell you that we propose the drive-through lane and the bypass lane, each 12 feet wide, so you have a full 24 feet of the two lanes to get around the building should somebody choose to come out of the lane. We've also run studies where we've shown vehicles, both a mix of SUVs, passenger cars, pickup trucks, and we have anywhere, depending on the size of the vehicles, from 12 to 16 vehicles that can be in the queue and off the street at any one time.
So how far out would that take it from where the, where you order and you go 16 vehicles back?
So, the pickup windows are back here?
Okay.
So you would have, say, if you start kind of where the setback is, you would have a couple of vehicles in here, and then all the way around until they get to here. So that, they would be off the street, like I said, 12 to 16 vehicles at a time.
That would, that would cover 12 to 15 vehicles?
Correct.
You've calculated that out?
Yes.
Okay. The, the one other question I have is that retaining wall, has it been, have your engineers looked at it and deemed that it's safe the way it is, it's constructed properly? I do see that there's a big crack in a piece of that wall down towards the, the lower end.
We haven't looked into the structural stability of that wall at this time. Prior to construction, I'm sure that'll be looked at, and they'll hire someone to make sure that it's a safe-
Will that be one of our conditions, Bill?
Well, no, that would be just part of the building permit, because it's a, because it's a structure that requires a building permit, and the, the building commissioner would say, you know, he wants to see the, to make sure that that wall is structurally safe, and he'll, he'll request that information at that time.
It is quite a-
And if it's not, they can, they can, they'll have to rebuild it, and it won't change the site plan, because they'll just rebuild it in the existing place.
Correct.
And it is, isn't it above what our normal zoning allows for, for heights of retaining walls?
We don't have, I don't think we have a retaining wall.
I don't believe there's a restriction.
No, we don't.
Only if it's over four feet.
Go behind a Kia if you wanna see a big retaining wall.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions? Anybody from the public want any comments, questions? Okay. So, we're gonna, again, we're gonna have two special permits, so I'd like a motion for accepting a special permit of 6.1.7, items nine and six. This is to deal with the parking standards and allow parking in the front setback and allow paving within five feet of the property line. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the second special permit would be for section 6.4.6, landscape standards to not provide foundation plantings along the facade facing street, and not to provide interior landscaping islands. Have a motion for that?
So made.
Second?
Second.
I'd like to just discuss that, I understand we're allowing this on this phase, and the way, because of where the parking is and the landscaping that's sighted from the street, we will allow it, but I just wanna make sure this isn't going to be something that's the way we're standard all the time. This is one of our requirements.
And, Mr. Chairman, a vast majority of it, they actually provided a lot of landscape islands, and in addition, I kinda look at the, you know, I look at the redesign, because they submitted this, the redesign with the patio area, they have the patio, then they have the landscape.
That's why I was trying to state that I think it works very well in this case.
I, I look at the patio area as a landscaped island. So I, I think they, they come much closer to complying, so.
So we have a motion and a second, can I have a vote on that, please? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have a five to nothing vote on that one. So then, can I have a motion to accept the site plan as it's been presented? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
I, I should have brought this up previously, if I may, Attorney Barry Quinones-
Barry, you've got approvals.
Sorry?
You're all approved.
I know. But, maybe, if I could just ask, special, special condition number one, which requires that we record the operation and maintenance plan, which obviously we're going to do, as a, maybe we don't need to change anything, I'll just throw it out there.
Do you wanna record it with the decision?
Yeah.
I don't care, you wanna record it as one document, that's fine.
See Exhibit A attached here too?
Correct.
Instead of, instead of recording it separately?
Correct.
Right, right, okay, so I don't think that-
Yeah.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Semantics.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're, oh, we're gonna do the, item number five, the Route 27 corridor study project update.
Sukanya, are you on?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
It's all yours.
I've, I have the slide presentation up on the screen.
Great. Thanks, Bill, I could just say next, good evening, everyone, my name is Sukanya Sharma, I'm a regional planner at Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or MAPC, and we're working with the town of Stoughton on this project called, we're calling it Route 27 zoning study. The project funding is coming from PEA, it was a grant that was awarded to the town, and then we have supplementary funds, matching funds from MAPC and the town. Together, it comes to around $65,000 grant, and this project, today, I'm hoping we can introduce this project and this be a soft kickoff, and so I'm hoping I can just talk a little bit about this project and what this would, the study would entail, but really we are also looking to in earnest at the community engagement through the community forum, which I talked a little bit about, which is planned for January. So really quickly, the goals of this project is to engage stakeholders, including the community, the planning board, precinct members, et cetera, to look at this study area and think about zoning changes to have some of these improvements done, for example, alignment of some of the master plan and economic development plan goals, recommendations to the study area, the housing and mixed-use options to be explored in terms of, at modern densities within the study area, and a few other things like looking at vacant and publicly owned land, as redevelopment opportunities, or, as well as transportation and multimodal mobility options, and also thinking about the environment and sustainability and resiliency together. So with all of these things, sort of as some of our guiding principles and goals, the next slide shows where we are actually sort of, what the, what the area looks like, so the study area is along the Park Street and the Route 27 corridor, and is, as you can see, on the southeast section of the town, close to the Brockton Town Line. And the timeline for this whole project is, we are of course starting today with just a soft kickoff and introduction to the planning board, and we are hoping to have recommendations for zoning language and zoning recommendations in front of the planning board by May 9th. And so between now and May 9th, we have a few events planned, first one being in January, the community forum, which is where we introduce the project and present some of the existing conditions analysis that we are doing currently. We will also have a survey open for a good amount of time all through January for the community to give input, not just during public forum, but asynchronously offline as well. We present those funding, those findings to the planning board in February, and then we'll, after the synthesis and feedback, we'll come back with some of the scenario development where we present options of what, what zoning could look like and how zoning can improve and achieve some of these goals to the community, and then we'll see what sort of resonates more with them. We'll again have a survey open after that community forum to continue to gather feedback, and in April we'll come back, we'll continue some of that outreach and present finally to the planning board in May with what we find and what the community engagement is. In terms of specifically what activities we'll be undertaking in this study, the scope includes existing conditions analysis, which includes some of the basic things like going to the site and sort of site visits, understanding the area context, also a zoning audit to closely look at what regulations are there and how we can achieve some of that goal alignment with master plan through the zoning options that the town has, parcel level analysis as well as some context analysis, then we'll get into the scenario development, which is like the zoning options that we're presenting to the community, and everything is underpinned by the community engagement that we do, and then finally the recommendations phase. And I just wanted to call out here that in terms of the community engagement, we have identified a few stakeholders, not limited to these on the screen, but we'll continue to add to them, we really want this process to be robust on this front, and our outreach methods include the forum, we are also welcoming anyone who would like to meet with us and provide insights, thoughts, interviews, as well as surveys. So this is sort of what we are hoping to do before May. A few things that I wanted to sort of highlight, but we are working with, and definitely in sort of working, these are working documents, but a few things that we wanted to sort of highlight in this introductory meeting were firstly, existing zoning, we are at, as part of our zoning audit, looking at what the zoning looks like, and some that have stood out to us, there is like a flexible development regulation, which has been underutilized in the area, a few other things are, we find some misalignment with the master plan and economic development plan goals, there are, there's also the senior housing, the restriction of only senior housing developing the, sorry, housing authority developing the senior housing. There are these few things that we have identified, and we continue to do this analysis to see standouts in the, stands out in the zoning analysis. A few other things we're looking at, the ownership of parcels in the next slide where we're talking about, where we're looking at what is town-owned versus state and privately-owned, and this will help us think about development opportunities and constraints. In the next slide, we're just briefly highlighting some of the things we, that have stood out in the early site visit, which includes a lack of disconnected sidewalks and lack of bike lanes, and there are a good amount of parcels in the study area which are not sewed, and of course, the presence of wetlands and flood zones also, also it's sort of critical to keep in mind, I think, of development in the area. A few opportunities, there are parcels that are sewed, which could be an opportunity, or there are parcels that are close enough to a civil line that perhaps extensions can be proposed, that too, just going to, which is a good advantage for the study area, and of course, presence of downwind land and just a gate to Stoughton, sends a good opportunity to think about it strategically. A few other things, I've just, the parcels that are sewed in the area, I wanted to note that near the Brockton Town, where the, there might be a few parcels that are sewed from the Brockton side, and we, we are continuing to sort of gather that information, and these are just draft maps, but those things that we looked at is this. Other things, in the next slide, we see the environmental constraints, being cognizant of the wetland area and the watershed areas, and definitely could be tying up relations that apply to those, and keep that constraint in mind when thinking about development here. A few other, the next slide talks about some transportation and mobility-related observations like the disconnected sidewalk, the driveways and curb cuts that exist, and of course, the bus stops that are there from our experience, the traffic speeds are incredible on that corridor, and it being a residential area, we definitely see opportunity to strategically think about mobility and multimobile options. So, these are some examples of things we are looking at, and we would very much appreciate if, if there are any inputs, thoughts, questions for us, we might not have a lot of time today to discuss, but I'm happy to meet one-on-one or, or come back again to talk about this area, this is just a soft opening, but I'm, I'm hoping we can engage together and sort of work together to, towards the May 9th.
Yeah, this is just the initial kickoff, we've kinda outlined the whole process, we've kinda gotten the, we've put out the dates, well, we've, we've looked at the calendar for the dates for the forums, the dates in February to come back to the planning board, you know, and it's, with the public engagement, you know, we're looking at, we've decided to kinda take the, we've looked at the, you know, getting the property owners list, we're gonna do a, on a, surrounding a butters list of budding, you know, butters to the butters, folks, like some of the folks on South Street, and, and Mr. Bellville's neighborhood, because it's right, right there, since they just went to Campanelli, and we've also decided to, we're going to also include precinct two and precinct three town meeting members, all of them, in the mailing, because, you know, this is their precinct, and, and any zoning, potential zoning changes, rezones that we may come out of this, you know, so they're well aware of it. So, and there's also a project website that MAPC is getting ready to launch with it, that will be linked to ours.
Okay. I wanna thank you for your presentation, you did a good job. Question I have is, if we're doing this rezone of this, we look at Route 27, are we looking to combine zoning, are we looking to put a new zoning category in? What's the goal, I guess, of what we're trying to do?
I think the goal is to analyze the, I'll go to the study area, well, one is where it's not sewed, a vast majority of this gray here that's not sewed-
Yeah, Craig Wade, we saw that?
It's in Phase 2, and if somebody wants to give us millions and millions of dollars, we, Craig, Craig could get that out pretty quickly, he's ready to go. We have it designed.
All right, well, you should've just kept on digging.
But there are, it's to take advantage of the sewers, predominantly like from about Seventh Street, you know, to, you know, where Turnpike and Park meet, these two large parcels here could be sewed through the back end of the park, so, you know, there are other opportunities, but it's to really look at, if, you know, like currently you have, where-
What's the zoning matter?
I wanna go to the-
What's the present zoning?
I'm going to the zoning.
There we go.
We have just general business, well, you know, general business down here, you know, these smaller lots, we may want a neighborhood commercial district that's much smaller in scale, that's better with a residential, I mean, these are the things that we'll look at. You have vacant, you have vacant land that, across, that's zoned, you know, RB, you know, now it's sewed, you know, is, is that the highest and best use of, of a five, of land, you know, there's five, six, eight, nine acres of vacant property that has like these paper streets through it? You know, these are the things, it's putting it into context, looking at the existing conditions and saying, you know, what do we wanna see? You know, what does that look like? You know, it's, it's, you know- You know, it's, it's, you know, isolated off of, of, you know, 27 or Park Street, and it has sewer. What are the highest and best uses, you know, and it could be an overlay district, it could be, you know, it could be any number of things to take a look at these things.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to see.
And obviously, and one of the things, and it makes people, right down here, I mean, we only did the properties that front 27. Well, one of the property owners is the town, and it goes quite back far. We're not proposing anything for the golf course. So that's, you know, but it is a property that fronts it, and it's all one lot. So it looks like there's a tremendous service area on the south. It really isn't. So I just get that out there because people see that.
You know, changing zoning along there, I don't know that it's going to accomplish anything. If you can't get the old Mermax in the building next to it, something to be done there, which is general business, if I believe, on the corner of Ash Street and 27. It's dilapidated, it's just falling apart. Nothing's happened with that over, God, 15 years, other than businesses go in there and leave.
Yeah. Is it sewed?
The sewer is there for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's new, so, you know.
Sewer's not active there.
Yeah, it's not active there. As soon as the sewer gets turned on, it'll be active, once the pump station is finally underway.
Someone's trying to tie in just down the street from there.
Yeah, we've got several of the residential properties.
Yeah.
There's a portion of the sewer down in that area that we were able to activate because it doesn't rely on the pump station. So there's some that just flows by gravity back up to Line Lumber Road.
So even at Ash Street, it requires the pump?
Yeah, because that section flows back down into Campanelli where there's a pump station, a municipal pump station being constructed as we speak. So they actually just, we had a lot of supply chain issues, and the pump station just got delivered last week. So the construction of that is happening now, should be done within the next month or two, and then we can get the rest of the system up and running.
Yeah, so.
So you'll see a lot of activity coming up, I think, in this upcoming year.
Yeah. So it's just to take a look at the corridor and take advantage of the sewer and take a look at it. Some things might not change, some things might. I think it's good to put a, you know, we've gotten a really good grant from the state to take a look at this, to put a fresh eyes on it, especially since the sewer is, is under, you know, there's a large portion, a significant portion that is or could be sewed. So, you know, that's why we're looking at doing this.
Right now, you have from 10th Street down to.
Campanelli.
Yeah, it's about 8th Street, actually. Some properties on 8th, where 8th, just before, just before 7th. Yeah. On the, on the edge of this area.
Yeah, it turns down 10th Street.
Yes.
So that's, that will all be active once the pump station's up.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Which will happen soon.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question. The, on Park Street and Turnpike, there's proposal to put lighting in the streetlights and all that. Is that part of what's going on with this?
Park and Turn, oh, you know, the, the road design? We're going to be, that, that's, we'll look at that also.
But that's money that's already been approved, correct?
The realignment of Turnpike where it gets into Park Street is, yes, that's an existing mass DOT project.
The design has been approved, yeah. We're going to get that on the tip, so the design would be paid for by the town, and then the construction would be paid for by the state.
Okay, I thought the design was already done, that's why.
No, that's ongoing right now.
No, it's ongoing. And the way the state works is to tip, if you wait for the state to fund the design, you'll be even older, and you might not ever see it. I might not ever see it. So the town took the initiative and the engineering department and development services and town meeting funded the design. Towns and cities that fund designs get projects built and get them on the tip and get them moved.
Shovel ready.
So, so in order to, we are moving this, the state has agreed with us and given it a project number, and it's assigned, and now we are moving it forward. We control the timeline, the design, and with the consultant, but it is a long process. It's a mass DOT. There's the 25%, and there's this, you know, it goes through their process.
I understand that.
But, but we are driving the bus.
Okay.
We're driving the bus on this intersection project is to drive the bus on it, to drive this project is to pay for the design, and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So.
I believe this is the meeting that I was assigned to go to on the 14th. Is that the one I was voluntold to go to?
On the mass, on the zoning, no, this was different.
What?
There was one that you were looking for, two members of the planning board.
Right, I was to do with the urban renewal and.
That's the urban renewal.
Yeah, that's the urban renewal downtown.
Okay, sorry you missed it.
That's a different, that's a different meeting.
Yeah, so we just wanted to introduce the project, and I think you've met Sakanya, we did the Campanelli, which we're, I'm finalizing that for the January public hearing. And, and just so the public knows, and then we're going to launch the website and get all the information, this presentation, everything up, and then, and then start that public process for, actually, the invites, meeting invites will probably go out right before Christmas, or right after Christmas, right around that time. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Right at 7 o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Come up to accomplish to one hour.
Item number six. A new public hearing will be held at the petition of the applicant Citizens Bank, represented by Expedite, the Deal LLC agent for the property, owner KGDHGK LLC, sounds like a lawyer's office, 139 Weatherby Drive, Westwood, Mass. 02090, for a sign, special permit under section 6.2.7. The applicant is seeking to allow three signs where section 6.2.6.5 states no more than two signs shall be allowed of any one business or industrial establishment in a B or I districts. The project is located at 90 Sharon Street, assessors map three, lot 121, in GB Business Zoning District. Can I have the applicant please come up to the front desk and introduce himself?
Yes, good evening. My name is Pete Hatcher. Representing Citizens Bank on 90 Sharon Street. The signed special permit proposal is for a 41.99 square foot wall sign on the west elevation facing the parking lot. It will be above the customer entrance. Section 6.2.7 allows the granting of a special permit when no, when no substantial detriment will result, and we do not believe it will. This sign helps aid in traffic flow and safety by allowing notification of the service and full view of signage when other signs are blocked by vehicles in line of sight. The proposed sign is consistent with other signs in the neighborhood. This is an allowed sign type. The sign is proposed for a property that is in a commercial zoning district, and the surrounding properties are commercial in nature. There would be no negative impact on the neighborhood, and this would not create sign clutter, as there's no sign currently on that wall. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, on the thing, you can see, I've got on the screen the, and I'll kind of enlarge it so everyone can kind of see the existing, they actually did a good job on the presentation. You can see the existing sign with the one sign, the existing citizens, they're going with a different branding where it kind of goes down, they're proposing the sign along this side, and then that sign. So that's the existing, so they want that re-signing it and putting it on this larger wall here.
How are they working out with the, I'm sorry, the square footage allowed on each wall? Are we within the square footage?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're under, they're well under the square footage.
Is the pole sign being eliminated?
I believe it's changed.
Oh, okay, so it's more of a concrete block with a ice.
It's, it's, it's letters going down, up and down versus the other, this is the pole sign now.
Okay.
So that's the pole sign there.
Are they just reversing it? No.
They're not seeking a waiver for square footage.
Just more than one sign.
Correct. They can actually have two signs. They can have a wall sign and a freestanding sign, or they could have two wall signs and no freestanding sign.
Are they going to get rid of the freestanding?
Don't see the chart on here that says what the allowed square footage or what their actual square footage is. Is that on there anywhere? Have you seen that, Bill?
I didn't hear, Dan, I didn't hear what you said.
Normally, on signed permits, we put in allowable square footage, a chart with allowable square footage and designed square footage. I just was looking for that chart.
I do not see that chart on the, on the, on the sheet. When the building commissioner sent it to us, he strictly sent it to us for the.
I agree, I just that this seems to be, I'm looking, I'm just looking, and maybe proportion of the way the sign is, it appears that the amount, the size of the sign as opposed to the square footage of the wall, I mean, if you're asking for two signs, I think the signs are only allowed to be 10% of the wall.
Correct.
So that means it'd have to be more than, than the two sign permit, it'd have to be, because if that's more than 10% both signs, then they'd have to be another permit on top of that. That's the reason I'm asking.
Okay.
I just don't know what the, I haven't, I don't know what the square footage of that wall is, and I'm looking at the signs right now for the square footage, but I. Do you know what the square footage of the wall on the sign?
I do not.
You don't know what it is either.
Would that be the whole, the whole elevation or just?
I believe of the way the code reads is, it's the elevation of that wall that the sign is on, and it can't be any more than 10% of that wall, I believe is what they're saying.
Right, but in this case, would it be just what's above the glass?
No, it's the entire, it's the glass and everything. It's the, it's the elevation.
Okay. All three?
That sign's 50 square feet, that wall, that is so approximately 50 square feet. So if both signs are there, that's 100 square feet. So that's, we're saying that wall is 1,000 square feet?
Well, it would be each wall.
It's each wall.
Right, but each wall, what I'm saying is, so the, where the two signs are, that which is one wall.
It's 10%.
Right, but that wall, right now, both of those signs are 50 square feet, I'm sorry, 25 square feet, which would make them 50 square feet. So I've got this, if I'm running this correctly, for both signs, which would mean that that wall would have to be more than 500 square feet. So it'd have to be more than 50 by 10. If it's 12 feet, it would have to be more than 40 by 10. I, I'm just looking, that wall doesn't seem to be the size to be able to handle those two signs.
Okay.
That's just my, my question.
I'm doing a rough estimate on the west side wall there. I count six panels of glass, and let's say they're three feet apiece. So, you know, it's 18.
Only 18 feet, and then another six.
And by eight feet high.
The building length, according to the site plan, is about 70 feet long and 34 feet wide, but then there's a bump out.
Yeah, but the depth on that side, where they're asking for the relief on the two sides, is only 34 feet.
In the front face, yeah.
Sorry, I want to make sure we're talking about the, where it says.
They're asking for relief for the white, the sign that's white, because they have a sign here, they're going to replace the sign there.
But they're asking for two signs on it, but there's, there's three signs on the building, the new plan shows three signs.
Correct. So there's an existing condition, there's a sign on the kind of one.
Which they're allowed, but now they're taking that sign down, so now they still keep.
And they're putting that sign there, that's would be one side, and then this, this is, this long face is the one. I believe that.
What about the vertical sign?
That's, they can have two signs, so they, they can have.
I agree, but.
That's the freestanding sign, the existing green one.
That's a freestanding sign, it's not on the building.
Right, that's a freestanding sign.
That's where the pole sign is now.
So that's the pole sign.
Well, I missed that.
Yeah, yeah.
So they said that those.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, that's why I was confused.
Ah.
Could we, could we suggest that maybe they come back explaining to us all the square footage and asking specifically?
The thing is, I don't have the, see, I thought there was, when I was questioning this, I thought there was two signs on the building.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's only 40, there's only 42 square feet per a sign, I don't know. It might be pushing.
There are two signs on the building now, there's one on the.
No, he thought there were two signs on the front of the building.
Oh, I see.
You, Mr.
One's a freestanding.
Mr. Chairman, did you think?
I see it now.
This vertical sign is a.
Pylon.
Is a pylon sign.
Pylon sign.
This is a sign, and those two in green would be allowed. The white sign that they're showing is the third sign that currently is not on the building.
Are they going to put a green background behind, like they have in the front?
Uh, no, that sign will be on a raceway, and it will match the color of the building, the raceway will.
Okay.
And are all three of these illuminated?
Yes, they are.
I would suggest that they go back and give us the exact calculations and specifically say what, what the waiver is that they're trying to put across here.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You know, I mean, they have to prove it to us.
Well, they have, they have mentioned the waiver, but you're right, this, this chart that we're asking for is supposed to be standard in the, in the plan. And the only reason I say is, I know you have generic signs here, and you're just picking, this is the one we're putting on this particular building. The only reason I'm asking for the, for the square footage is to be sure that we're falling within those guidelines.
Within the 10%?
Within the 10%.
For that, for the west elevation wall?
Well, for actually both, because you're changing, both elevation walls, you're changing both, you're changing those signs.
Well, they're both well under the 10% for sure.
Okay, I just, I'm looking for the calculation to show that that's there, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Okay? And the pylon sign, that one meets within our requirements, the pylon sign?
Yeah, that's, it's 40, it has to be under, I forget what the square footage is, but yeah.
Well, the only question we have right now would be just to create that chart, bring that back with us. Any other questions from anybody?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at, through Google, and I think if, actually, it showed up right there. There's no sidewalk there on Sharon Street where your neighbor has the sidewalk, and it actually stops right at your property. I have it here if you want to look at it, but.
This also abuts the Dunkin' Donuts and other project that's going on.
Yeah. See right here, where they're, their sidewalk comes all the way down from Bay Road and stops at your property. And then if you look to this side. Indirectly, you have asphalt there. So it is a walkway on that side. It's just in that one area. You don't have a sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't know why that is.
I'm not sure.
I believe, Mr. Murphy, that this is strictly a sign permit, and I do not think that you have a direct nexus in order to require a sidewalk. If they came in for any type of site changes, layout, parking, addition, anything that's related to the site itself, that's when you could look at requiring it. I do not believe that you have a direct nexus to link a sidewalk to a sign permit. You do under site plan review, you, I, I would say you do not under a sign permit.
Okay, it just struck me as we have it on...
Right. Oh, I understand. Yeah, it could have been when it was developed.
It's a 20, 30-foot-long strip that doesn't have a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So...
I would love to require a sidewalk. I believe that you really do not have a direct nexus for that. If you had anything with this, anything opening up the site plan and changing the layout or the site conditions, clearly.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, you want them to look at continuing it, to provide the chart that shows that they can comply with zoning other than the third, and...
If they request the continuance, I'm open to the continuance.
Okay, okay.
Continuance, yeah.
Okay, the continuance would have to be, the next meeting would be January 25th. So you would have to continue to January 25th. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, hopefully, I will look at, I will look at, provided that they can meet, I guess the direction I would like is, provided that they can demonstrate they can meet the zoning other than the third sign, would you like me to prepare a draft recommendations for approval and findings?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Could I have a motion to continue this meeting till January 25th?
Motion to continue.
Have a second, second. All in favor?
Aye. Uh, one question. Six o'clock was the only time this is six o'clock?
We're gonna get back to you on the time.
The meetings normally start at seven. I will let you know.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting, we're gonna have a discussion whether we want to look at changing the time of the meeting, but I, I have the, whoever the, I forgot who the person is, the contact I can, I send the agenda to.
Tracy.
Chris, huh?
Tracy.
Tracy, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hope you all have a good evening.
Have a good Christmas.
Thank you.
And just have Tracy or yourself get back with me and, and exactly what we need.
Are you looking for later or earlier?
Item number seven. A new public hearing will be held on the petition of applicant Project Expeditis Consulting Company, care of Andy Fitz, 28 Station Street, Manaple, New Jersey, on behalf of the property owner, Papen Tony Adias, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that improperly, Properties LLC, 701 Gay Street, Westwood, Mass., for the Site Plan Review Section 10.6.2 for a proposed citizens, a proposed Chase Bank, I'm sorry. The applicant proposes to renovate and retrofit the existing building into a new bank branch with a drive-through ATM. The renovation include building enhancements and parking lot lighting and landscape improvements. A special permit under Section 3.1.4D.5 to allow a drive-through for the proposed Chase Bank is also requested. The project is located at 386 Washington Street, assesses map 56, Lot 012 in General Business Zoning District. Can the applicant or his representative please come up?
Andy, are you on?
Andy, are you on?
He's muted.
Okay. Can we just bypass this one and come back? The engineer had talked to me that they were on a conference call at 7 o'clock, and I know he, he came in and dropped that off. So could we just, could we continue this and just go to the next application?
Item number eight. A new public hearing will be held at the petition of the applicant J.F. White Contracting Company, 56 Old Page Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, represented by Carla Chaffee Esquire and Nixon PBD LLP Exchange Place, 53 State Street, Boston, Mass., for Site Plan Review under Section 10.6.2 for a proposed 1,200-plus-or-minus-square-foot, two-story office building with 13 parking spaces and related site improvements. The applicant has requested waivers to Section 10.6.9, parentheses, 17, comma, 19, comma, 20, and 24, close parentheses, submittal requirements to not provide an operation or maintenance plan, signage details, color renderings, and snow storage plan. And Section 10.6.1, parentheses, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, close parentheses, development impact report, not to provide a traffic impact, visual impact, environmental impact, economic impact, and community impact assessments. This project is located at 56 Old Page Street in the I-Industrial Zoning District. Can the applicant and/or his representatives please come up and ask why he wants to throw out all of the zoning requirements?
Hello.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Carla Chaffee, as you said. I'm from Nixon PBD. We represent J.F. White. Today, I am joined by Hillary Holmes, who is from Langen Engineering. And I believe virtually, we also have John McIntyre, who's the VP of Equipment Sales for J.F. White. And to answer your first question, I'll take it on. J.F. White has been operating at this location for approximately 40 years, and so those operations have worked very well within the town for that amount of time. Where before you today, this is a simple request for an in-kind replacement of the existing office building that's located at 56 Page Street. There's currently a two-story office building there of approximately 2,400 square feet. As you are very aware, Old Page Street is being redeveloped in conjunction with the Stoughton Logistics Park, which has recently been reviewed and approved by the board. The improvement of that right-of-way, the 60-foot right-of-way, will decrease significantly the setback of the existing office. It will actually make it very difficult to operate out of that existing office. So we're looking just really to take the same-sized building and move it, you know, not very far to the northwest. So the, the size is the same, the operations are the same. We've been working with staff since our pre-application meeting in July. So although the physical additions are really just an in-kind replacement, we're also formalizing the parking, significantly improving the stormwater retention, we're... Oh, and also, the office building will be connected to the new sewer line. So those are, we see as significant improvements to the site. The impact, our operations are not changing. We'd like everything to stay exactly the same. And I can walk through each of the waivers requested if you would like, or just address some questions. But I know that Hillary has a presentation prepared that she'd like to walk through to give you a little more context. So I suggest maybe we can pass it off to her, and then I'll, I'm happy to address questions or the waivers in more detail. Thank you.
All yours.
All right. So on the screen, you can see, outlined in blue, is the 56 Old Page Street property that J.F. White is currently operating. Maple Street is to your north, Old Page Street, Page Street is to the right, to your east. So you can see in red is the existing office building, and you can see the new subdivision road that cuts through there that's sort of on the bottom of the page that Carla was mentioning is very close to that subdivision road. So the orange rectangle is where the new office building would be located. So they would be building the new office building. Once it's online, then they would be tearing down the red existing office building. If you go to the next page, I can just kind of, so this is just the proposed office building and improvements in context to the overall site. Obviously, it's a very small area on this overall 6.6-acre site. You know, we're putting in the new building. As Carla mentioned, it's, it's a 30-by-40-foot footprint, but it's two stories, so that's why it's 1,200, it's 1,200 square feet footprint, but two stories, so it's total 2,400. So with that building around it, we're putting in sidewalks, curbing. You're also going to see formalized parking, so we have 13 parking spaces proposed. We're also paving, so the gray sort of shading areas, the paving that you're seeing. You know, the site has a mix of paved areas, gravel areas, unpaved areas, so this is really gonna be a large improvement, paving this area. The green that you see along the subdivision road, as well as around the building, are as proposed vegetation that I'll touch on next in some subsequent slides. So if you want to, Bill, go to the next. Thank you. This is just a zoom, zoom in on the site plan, so you can see a little bit more detail. The building's in gray, the green landscaping, the gray pavement. I'm gonna go to the next page. Yeah. And this is just really the utilities, just so you can see the improvement. So right now, the existing building has a 3/4-inch water service that comes from Old Page, goes to the existing office building, and then another line is routed to the shop building, which is to the, in the upper right corner of the page. So we coordinated with the water superintendent to see what he would like to see in terms of, for this new office building, working collaboratively with him. He said, you know, really, let's put in a new 1-inch water service for the new building, and then a new 1-inch water service for the existing shop building. So you'll have two 1-inch water services, two separate meters, and those will tie into the new 8-inch water main that is on this, in the subdivision road that's being constructed as part of the Stoughton Logistics Park project. So that's the water service. In terms of the sanitary, right now, the existing site has a septic system. So the existing office building and the existing shop building that I had mentioned are both tied into a septic system on-site. So the new office building will be tied into the sanitary system. So we're gonna have a gravity line going to a grinder pump to a 1-and-1/2-inch force main. That force main is gonna be tied into a force main that's going to be constructed as part of the Stoughton Logistics Park subdivision roadway project and go into the Stoughton Logistics site, being conveyed to the sanitary connections that are at, on Turnpike Street. The existing shop building will remain connected to the existing septic system. For the stormwater system, right now, you know, there's, we're definitely improving it in terms of existing, from the existing conditions to the proposed. The office building will be going to a, the roof runoff will be going to a subsurface recharge system, as well as, we also have a catch basin on-site, that it will be a water quality unit. So it's a particle separator, they'll provide more sort of TSS removal, total suspended solid removal. So those are both going to this recharge system. So that's been sized to meet the Massachusetts stormwater standards for recharge. We're also meeting the TSS removal standards for Massachusetts, as well as the town. That recharge system will also provide phosphorus and nitrogen removal as well through infiltration. We did do a test pit that the town witnessed at that location. There are no concerns related to the soils, groundwater, or depth proximity to rock. That will, system will have an overflow for larger storms that are tied into the drain and the subdivision road. If you want to go to the next slide. So we are proposing site lighting as part of the improvements as well, so we have some wall-mounted fixtures, as well as two poles. That's really to make sure that we're in compliance with the town's requirements in terms of the one foot candle, minimum requirements around the walkways and the parking and around the building. You know, these are LED fixtures, they're dark sky compliant, and the overall lighting design meets the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America standards. So you can sort of see the foot candle, like those larger sort of dash lines that outline the site are, sort of the limits of the foot candle. So where that, how the, how much the light's gonna spread around the building and to illuminate the drive aisles, as well as the parking and walkways. And then to the right, you can see the types of fixtures we're proposing. We have two pole-mounted fixtures, and then, so that pole-mounted fixture is in the upper right, and then you see the wall-mounted fixture in the lower right. And if you go to the next page. So in terms of planting, this is one item that we coordinated with Bill Roth and Craig Horstfall on very early on in the pre-application and some of our discussions. One item that we did change is, originally, as part of the subdivision road, there were not street trees being proposed. We didn't really have quite enough area in terms of the width along there to propose street trees. Talking with J.F. White, they're willing to widen that area so we could get in some street trees. So right now, we're proposing a total of 14 shade trees and four under-story trees. So there's some pin oaks that are lining the subdivision road, and then the smaller trees to the right are some smaller birch trees. There is some area that is currently paved that we're now vegetating. The green shaded area is gonna be lawn, so it's really a simple, a simple design in terms of trees and some lawn. Around the building, similarly, we're, we have, you know, lawn seeding, and we have a couple of maples that are proposed. All of the trees are native as well, in terms of the species selection.
Excuse me, just back to that, Bill?
Yes.
Along with the trees are on that road, I don't recall, are we putting a fence on that road, or is there something in that area?
Yes, so you're gonna have the curb 10 feet with the lawn and trees, and then you have a fence on the back.
What type of fence we put in there?
So that is the fence that was approved as part of the Stoughton Logistics Park project. It's a black chain-link fence. And then there is a sliding gate for the new driveway curb cut for the J.F. White site as well. And these are just some elevation views of what the building will look like. You know, in terms of character, it's gonna be very similar to what exists there now, just, you know, nicer, an upgrade in terms of kind of the construction at that time to, you know, what's possible now. But it's gonna be very simple.
What is the siding?
You know, in terms of the siding, I don't think they have a particular, you know, in terms of colors, they're looking at more neutral colors, beiges. In terms of the type of siding, you know, Carla, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to material selection yet, but it'll be based on, you know, durability and feasibility. Given that this is an existing industrial area without any sightlines to residential properties, we feel like a muted, as Hillary said, kind of beige-to-white tones are what we're going with. The current office building is, is all white siding. So it'll be something similar, although we have chosen the kind of board and batten pattern, which is generally more attractive, or we believe so.
Does a board and batten with a standing seam buff on is what you're looking at?
We haven't selected whether or not. I think we would prefer a metal roof, but that's not been determined.
Usually part of our site plan review on a building is that we do have the colors and the materials taken down as part of that plan, so that's the reason we're asking the question, as part of the review that we normally do. And the site plan is, granted, it's not seen by any residential areas, but it is seen by, on Page Street and that area can still be seen visually to that building, so it's still part of what can be seen, especially where we only have a black fence. It's not like it's hidden behind a white fence or anything else.
Right, well, if, if it pleases the board, I'm sure that's something we could provide. As you see from our application, that was a waiver that was requested, which I think we believe is appropriate, given the location, the operations, and honestly, the current condition of the property, which is, if you drive by there, it's not the most beautiful office building we've ever seen.
That's why we're trying to make it look better.
Of course, of course. But I can assure you with 100% genuineness that it will be better-looking than what is there now.
That's not difficult. That doesn't, may not get...
I take what I can get.
That may not be to what we want, that's all the question. So recommendations, discussions from town? Craig?
Yeah, we, we did provide a...
Yeah, we, we did provide a technical review letter. You have it in your packet. We didn't have an awful lot of comments. A lot of the technical review items are rather minor, adding, adding some labeling and, and a little bit more detail in some areas on the plan. You know, we're satisfied with what they provided for stormwater management. We think their connection to the sewer-
Do you have any comment on why they're keeping the, the septic system and not connecting that to the sewer? Otherwise, they're taking the existing building that they're connecting new water to-
They are connecting the new building to sewer.
They are connecting the new building, not, not the existing building, they're not connecting-
Not all of the existing buildings, no. There are some that are-
Right, but the one that they're connecting to water, which is right in line with what they're connecting to sewer, why wouldn't that one be connected to sewer? That was my, that's my question.
Yeah, we, we didn't comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, right now, there's no existing issues with the septic system. They actually had a, you know, Title V inspector come take a look at it. It seems to be in functioning order, so they'd like to, the client would like to keep that since there seems to be no issues with it in terms of the operations now.
Do we have any standing requirement for sewer, once we, once sewer passes the property, there's a timeframe for everything to go onto sewer?
No, there's nothing that would require all of the buildings to connect in our regulations.
And, and another factor we evaluated is that the amount of people that will be served by that continuing the use of the septic system is very low. Can you remind me, Hillary, the number of employees?
I think maximum, there's like eight employees who use that shop.
So it's one and a half bath, essentially.
Is there any showers or anything like that in the building?
No, there are not.
Okay. Bill, do you have any comments? Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
No, this is, we really just, they've addressed what we really wanted was the, the street trees, and they're, they're making a, they're taking a, a site and, and making it look a little prettier. We really wanted this, the, the street trees along the thing. A detailed landscape plan in, in the middle of this site is, would kind of be, it would be putting a little too much lipstick on a pig.
Go ahead.
Is this part of the Stoughton Logistics Park?
No.
No, no, it's under separate ownership, and it's continuing the same, same business that's been there.
It's adjacent to it, but it's not part of it.
Right, but what I'm seeing is on some of the drawings here, it says Stoughton Logistics Park.
It may be in association with the road going through or the abutting property. If you can point me to what you're looking at, I'm happy to-
Oh, yeah, I think that that's just a typo in terms of some of the sheets say Stoughton Logistics Park. So we can correct that when we address some of other, some of the other Craig ques, comments that Craig had as part of his technical review. That's just a typo.
Did you mention sidewalks?
So there, there are no sidewalks proposed along the subdivision road. We are proposing sidewalks to get from the parking spaces into the building and around the building.
Okay, but there's nothing out in the roadway, though, correct?
There is nothing out in the roadway, that is correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't, I have a problem with that, but that's, no, the story-
That's already been discussed, so. Anybody else have any comments?
How wide is that strip where you're doing the plantings, the trees?
It is 10 feet wide.
10 feet?
10 feet.
Not much.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, 10 feet is definitely sort of, is adequate for that size and those types of trees, based on the spike, based on the spacing.
I know that's the general contention, but it really isn't. Again, like Jim had said, you know, we're trying to make things look better around here. And I think that the extra effort would be in line, make things look better.
Yes, I mean, we certainly widened it from what it was in order to provide enough soil and planting medium for the trees that we're proposing. We certainly feel comfortable with what we're proposing from a technical standpoint and a survivability for those plants. But yes, I understand your concern. Obviously, more is always better. We do have some constraints on the site.
So we're asking for more.
And I would like to add, we have had multiple calls with Hillary about site layout and turning radius for the vehicles that are going in and out to accommodate existing operations. It would be very difficult for us to, to provide a change or an increase to that, that 10-foot area.
We just got in from the hospital, it was discharged, and he just did not do sitting on the phone after an hour and a half.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment?
Okay, thank you.
So I'd just like to review, unless you would like to do it where you know exactly what you're looking for, for sections, I'd like to be able to just have, review each section that you're looking for waivers from, so that we can, we can just go through it. We know what it is, and then we can kind of make decisions on where we're going from there. Because we, if it's going to be special permit, we have to vote on each one of them individually anyway, so we might as well just take a look at them.
Nope, I'm happy to review these.
And I'm looking at, I believe you're going to review your attachment B, is that where you're going?
That's exactly where I was going to start.
That's probably the easiest thing, correct?
Yep, attachment B. And, and as I think I mentioned at the beginning, these waivers are largely premised on the fact that these are existing operations that are, that are not changing. So for the operation and maintenance plan, this is really kind of a half waiver, so if you can give me a point for, you know, a half instead of a full waiver, I think that would be great, because we have provided a stormwater operation and maintenance plan that was prepared by Langen. So in terms of maintenance of the private ways and the interior of the site, we believe we've been operating there for 40 years without any complaint, and will continue to maintain the area in, in the same manner as we have for years. Signage detail, that's a waiver that we are not proposing any signage, so-
I don't think you need a waiver for that, then, because we're not proposing a site, there's no waiver required.
I like to be thorough.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Colored renderings, we had discussed previously. Again, I, I think that the design of the building is such that it's very standard. The colors we will be using will be muted, beige or white. Given the surroundings, the additional landscaping, the fencing and the new development that's going on, you know, at the logistics park, we feel confident that our design will fit in very well, but if you'd like to have a discussion about that, I'm happy to. Snow storage, you know, we'll again continue, we have over, almost five acres, there's plenty of space to store snow. It's going to be in a place that will not infringe on operations or access for, for anyone exterior to the site. There are certain elements of the impact report we're asking waivers for, although an impact report was provided. Again, since there's no change to operations, no increase in business or employees, we felt that a waiver of the traffic impact assessment was appropriate. The visual impact assessment as well, you know, as we've said, this is really an improvement to the existing industrial area, and we hope it is viewed that way and find it appropriate as not having to do a full assessment. And the same with a full environmental impact assessment. You know, it's a current industrial use, the office replacement is not, we're not putting in a larger building, we're not increasing operations. Really, the impacts are lessened by our site improvements, so environmental impact assessment, we feel, could, could be waived.
It continues on the next page with the economic impact.
That it does.
I guess you wrote a book.
Well, you know, it's the double-sided printing thing, sometimes it gets me. Economic impact assessment, very similar argument, you know, this is a existing operating business. We'd like to continue to operate in the town and continue to add to the tax revenue of the town. Community impact assessment, assessment, same, we're, we're not increasing traffic, there's no new negative externalities that are coming along with this relocation of the The written submittals, these, now I'm at 10.6, .12. We have included number one, number two. This is more to point out that there are no additional variances or zoning relief required. That's number three. We had discussed that in our pre-application meeting, and staff had concurred with us in that conclusion. And then the waiver request really is just for the last item. Whether or not we need a letter from the Stoughton Historical Commission. You know, the office was constructed in 1993, there, it's not in any sort of historic district, it's not in any sort of state register, and the, based on the bylaw, section, chapter 77, section 3, review is not required by the Historical Commission. I believe the intent of that requirement in the bylaw is just to ensure that you, you get the letter if there is jurisdiction. I've concluded that there is not jurisdiction, but since the wording of the bylaw was written as such, I felt a waiver would be good to request, to be prudent, as I said, thorough.
My only, I guess my only comment on any of the items that you've requested would be on the, the visual impact of the building and what it looks like when it was said and done, and if we could get something that is a little bit better than the stick-drawn thing, we'll be glad, I'd appreciate that. Other than that, I personally have no other issues with any of these. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on any of them?
No.
Okay, one more.
Go ahead.
One of the things I noticed, looking from Google Maps, most of the buildings on the property have solar power. Is this building going to have solar power?
That's not something that we had considered at this point.
Okay, it just seems like, I'm looking at all your buildings here, and rough guess, nine out of 10 have solar power. You know, panels.
Yeah. I don't know, John McIntyre, are you there, and can you speak up if you have an answer on that?
Yeah, we haven't really got to that point as, as of yet. You know, we're going through this process, and we just didn't really, you know, we're just trying to get the approval to get the building in there at this point, but it's something that we'll probably entertain at, at some point. Again, we're going to be meeting with the building, the builders of the actual building, going over finishes and exterior finishes, so we, we really have not got there, but it's something we discussed, we have not made a final decision on it yet.
And also, John, I, I was wondering about the existing buildings.
No, what I'm saying is, the existing buildings all have solar panels on them, which is great.
Yeah.
It's a smart move.
Okay, I, I, well, you know what, you did a better job looking at Google Map than I did, because I wasn't sure. That's what I wanted to confirm with John.
Yeah, we probably, we have solar on like four of six buildings.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five. You get five.
It could be, it could be five.
Quick count.
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, and those, those panels have served us well. We've reduced our carbon footprint immensely with, with the installation of them.
Okay, thank you.
Is anybody, any members of the public want to comment, either online or that are here?
Hearing none. What I would like to do, if the board is okay with it, is, where we have to vote on special permits, I'd like to combine all of the special permits, except for the 10.6.9 2.0 color renderings into one vote, if at all possible, unless the board would like, want to take an individual vote on each one of those, or any specific one in-
Mr. Chairman, are you intending on trying to approve this project tonight?
I think the special permit part of it, we could, and then there's the site plan review we could do separately, but at least we get the special permits out of the way, if that's possible. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't see any reason, unless somebody else has got something else on the special permit part of it, or any requests of where we are, the site plan review, I believe, we cannot, we cannot approve tonight, but I don't know why we can't take the vote. We have five members here tonight, and we've heard the testimony.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask one point of clarification? I, I believe it is just a site plan review and not a special permit.
These items, let me just wait, it was written up.
So if none of these items are special permit, then what I'm saying is wrong, and then we would just go for site plan review.
I didn't advertise it, I advertised it as, there, there are waivers to your section, so it's not the special permit.
Then we can't review it then tonight.
Okay.
Okay, you know, I, I would suggest as well, if you entertain conditional approvals, I'm not sure if that's something that you ever do.
No.
No?
Okay, all right.
Because, right, the decision's based on the, the plans, and they don't have, I don't have any conditions or anything. What I recommend, it looks like they don't have any issues with your waiver request, is, most likely is, and we've, we know your engineer quite well, she got a much, much larger project approved right next door, is that they will revise the plans, they will satisfy engineering, and then I will write a recommendation for approval for the site plan and the waiver. I'm recommending that you continue it. The next meeting is January 25th. I'm sure Hillary has enough time to get the changes to myself and Craig, and then have that ready for the board for 25th. And it's literally, here are the changes, they've addressed all the minor engineering, and we're, and here's the set of approvals, recommendation. And the good thing is, is that a week prior, I emailed a draft to you and to Hillary to make sure that there are no, you know, technical glitches, you know, misspellings, wrong, wrong citations for, you know, getting the owner's name wrong, and the deed references, and those sorts of things.
Perfect, perfect. And then I guess one more point of clarification, it sounds like at your next meeting, you would like to see everything that's in the staff memo addressed, as well as colored renderings.
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Colored rendering is also the types of materials that are being used. I'm assuming you're going to request a continuance?
Sure. I would appreciate a continuance if the board pleases.
To January 25th.
To January 25th.
Now, have a motion for that? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
See you on January 25th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
It'll be an accident that night.
Will be. Mr. Chairman, I've been texting, I know Mr. Fitz is on board, his engineer, his here, I guess he's been on some sort of conference call, I don't know. Well, he's just showed up.
How you doing? Sorry, I was just finishing a presentation downstairs.
I have the site plans up on the screen. You need to press the green button.
Thank you for having me. My name is Josh Klein with Stonefield Engineering and Design. We are the site civil and traffic engineer for the project. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts, as well as nine other states in the Northeast. And we're excited to be here. So we work with Chase kind of across the Northeast and some other regions as well. You know, we have a, I think, a very prominent, you know, corner within the town that's really in need of redevelopment, and Chase is looking to kind of do an adaptive reuse, to kind of bring the site, you know, up to the standard, I think we all hope it to be. I mean, Chase is a, is a really high-quality tenant. You're going to see that through, you know, the landscaping and the design elements. Now, we do have a, have a challenge here, you know, it is a tight site, we're, you know, we're not pretending like it's not a tight site, but, you know, it's a really good use for a site like this. You know, a QSR or a fast food restaurant obviously poses its challenges, where retail banking will fit really well here. There's already a kind of a drive-through for the, for the drive-up ATM. Looks like we have the demo plan up. Maybe if you could scroll one more sheet down. Perfect, and to the left, would be great, there's a site plan to the left. So again, we have the existing restaurant in the middle, driveway in the bottom-left, driveway in the top-right, which are really going to remain as part of the application. And then we're kind of maintaining kind of the existing pattern or kind of access on-site, kind of redoing the parking areas. I think one of the real keys here is new striping, new signage, and really kind of guiding these customers around the site. Big part of, you know, for Chase Bank is we're going to be providing ADA compliance on-site. So today, there's no ADA path from the right-of-way to the building. The current ADA spaces are not compliant, so that's one of the keys as part of this application, is assuring ADA compliance. The site will also include kind of new landscaping around it, new fencing to provide screening, new lighting, LED downward-facing shielded lights, to ensure that we're kind of meeting, you know, banking security standards. We have to make sure, you know, both at the ATM, as well at that front entrance vestibule, that we're providing those proper, kind of secure lighting standards. I'm happy to kind of go more technical if there are questions, I can kind of go into some of the other elements. We are kind of removing areas on-site to provide a little bit more open space, we're providing a trash enclosure in order to kind of house and protect the dumpster as well, which you can see in the bottom right. We did also submit elevations, you know, Chase is kind of looking to, you know, kind of take the existing building, but really bringing their branding and kind of their kind of material list, you know, to this application. So you can kind of see some of the changes to the tower element, as well as kind of the facade. I think softening things up a little bit and kind of bringing it a little bit, you know, into like kind of their branding wheelhouse. So that's really kind of the overall. I know we, we do have a technical review letter, we did go through, I think our goal is to kind of work with, with staff and professionals to kind of get this addressed. We do understand we're going to be, we're going to be coming back to the board once we have that meeting with them and make some changes. But obviously, we wanted to kind of open the application tonight. You know, we're, again, excited to get the process starting. I know Chase is really excited to move in here and happy to kind of answer any, any questions.
Okay, I can go ahead and start. I'll highlight a couple of things. On the thing, on, on the site plan sheet, they were proposing a six-foot vinyl fence along the south and east property lines. That fence is not needed, and actually, on the south property line, because that's, that's the adjacent commercial parking lot, and, you know, it just affects visibility. So it's, it's really the, so that should, we're recommending that be removed.
Do you want to remove down the whole deck, the whole side of it?
They are proposing a fence.
Fence right along there.
Right along here. And, and as cars are, Washington Street, it's actually, it impedes, it impedes site distance, but there's no need to wall off this bank from an existing, it's parking lot to parking lot. I see no need, the site plan provides the, provides the buffer and the fencing along here. However, where it's parking, a parking, commercial parking lot next to another commercial parking lot, for visibility, you know, we shouldn't wall it off.
I'll take it under recommendation. I agree for the first maybe 30 feet, 40 feet, but I'm not sure as we're going back further, but I do agree that there's a sightline issue in that parking area.
Well, you know, I initially was like, oh, they need to step the fence back, but then I, after the site visit and looking at it, I was like, I just, there's, there's an existing kind of guardrail and the parking abuts, and they're providing landscaping along their parking. I think that, I think that walling it off, opening it up and just visually along the street.
I'm, I'm.
And then, the other thing I actually was, is this, is that they have, they did not show the, any of the signage, and they need to at least identify it on the, they talk about a freestanding sign, it's not there, so they need to add that. But I did talk to the, I don't know, the expert, Andy, whoever's doing the thing, I was like, they're, on this tower, they're proposing, there's an, there's like, it looks like a sign band here, and a sign band here, and a freestanding sign. If they're proposing, and it is a corner lot, and those two faces face the two streets, you know, they would need a sign, a special permit for a sign, and they'd need to submit that. And that's just more of an FYI. However, they do need to provide the location of the monument sign.
There's a monument sign, correct.
On the things. And with that, I think those are really, the landscape plan needs to be revised, they didn't provide the color photos for, that meets section 6474. And then I had a handful of areas, there's large expanse of ground cover in area, let me go to the landscape plan. There's these large expanses down here at this entrance of ground cover and a large expanse of ground cover. I see no reason why a canopy tree can't be placed in there, in, in both of those. We are also, some of the recommendations is along this frontage, you know, there's no need for, you have all this striped area, we're recommending that this be removed, that the, a, the meeting, the building code pad comes out to the, to the asphalt, and this area be landscaped. Also, some of the engineering requirements is to provide a better throat distance, we're looking, we're recommending that this also be removed, but Craig can kind of go over some of those. So, do you want the site plan or the landscape plan?
That one's fine, yeah. We just had some tweaks to the, the curbing layout, the parking. We're looking to maximize the landscaped area wherever we can, it's a really tight site, but we don't want to also jeopardize the site circulation, so we're sensitive to that. Like Bill said, I think we can get a little bit more behind the building where that sidewalk is, and I think that's important because as you drive up Central Street, that's what you see, is that side of the building. So even though it's sort of the rear of the facility, it's kind of front-facing on, on Central Street.
It's going to be where you come around for the drive-through anyway, so.
Yeah, so I think we can grab a little bit more here and there. And then, really, we were just looking for a little bit of a tweak on the striping as, as you would exit out to Central Street. They have like a double yellow line, it would be confusing, I think, for drivers if that arced section of it were there, so we wanted to see that removed and then like an arrow that shows you can go straight or turn to the left. So I think that will clarify things a little bit for drivers, so, just some minor revisions.
Where are your utilities going to be, your HVAC systems, is that on the roof now and existed there, or what's going to happen with that stuff?
Correct. Yeah, the intention, it will be new systems, but they'll be on the roof. And I think in terms of some of the fencing, land.
Excuse me, the parapets are high enough, they'll be non-visual from the street?
Yeah, given, given the shape of the building, the location with the tower elements, you know, and having them centralized, we don't foresee them being an issue, but it's definitely something we can have our architect look at.
I like to see them on the elevation, if they're going to be able to be seen, what we're looking at, whether, what a height unit to putting on there.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Okay.
On the drawing.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. On the drawing, I'm, actually, I'm looking Google's map, and what happens is in the back of the building, it looks like where they have their trash barrels. Do you have any dumpster for this area?
Yeah. Yeah. Bottom right corner.
Perfect.
Okay, all right.
And, and one of the things that they're proposing that we talked about in the pre-app, which I really like, is they're proposing a, the, a CMU, a three-sided CMU block wall with the same materials and colors, so it really is seamless to the site and blends in with the, it, you know, it's the same as the building.
The same question I have, is that going to accommodate building trash in conjunction with recycled material?
Yes, it is designed to be able to contain both.
Okay. One of the other questions, when you're talking about signage, there is a pole sign now. Does that go away or does that stay?
They haven't shown where their signs are, that's one of our comments, they need to provide that information.
No, no, I'm just saying there's, there is a pole sign, so.
Yeah, we work, we work with a sign, a sign vendor, so they're kind of finalizing the package for it, and we'll make sure that kind of goes in and on a resubmission.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the drawing here and, on the corner of Central and Washington, is that, is that a walkway that you have on the inside?
I guess it depends on the inside, but we are proposing a sidewalk connecting Central Street to the ADA spaces, as well as Central Street to the Chase Bank property.
Does everybody see what I'm, where I'm talking?
Yeah, right, right here in this corner?
Right, right, yeah, on the inside.
Yeah, that's a sidewalk from the handicap space, here, let me, I'll zoom in.
Looks like a pedestrian way and then a walkway coming across, a line walkway.
This is a sidewalk right here, from the sidewalk, pedestrian way here, from the handicap space here, and then down to the front door.
Now, what is the purpose of that?
It's for, it's the accessible route for, for, to get from the street and from the handicap space.
Okay. Oh, I got you.
I'm actually looking at, it looks like an asphalt sidewalk on Central Street, on town property, if you want to call it, but concrete out on Washington Street.
That's the existing, that's shown outside the, the bushes.
Okay.
That's the area outside of the trees and stuff that they're showing.
It's a, it's a mixture, it looks like they did like a ramp improvement at one point, so the corner's concrete, but then kind of as you get past the corner, it goes back to asphalt.
And bear in mind, too, that that whole intersection's getting redone as part of the 138 corridor improvement, so there'll be additional tweaks.
Will that encroach upon this property?
I believe you've taken that into account.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, we have the DOT's latest plans, and again, that's, some of the improvements in that right-of-way will be driven by them, we won't, you know, be able to kind of change those.
So if you were coming down Central Street, heading west to Washington Street, would you have access into that parking lot? Okay. Then, all right, that's fine.
The existing materials on the exterior of the building, the metal roofs, now, are you replacing those or are you just going to be painting over them?
Yeah, so, so the latest I have is that they would be, if there are any repairs needed, they would obviously make them, but they will be painting the roofs.
Thank God.
No, it's just that every tenant keeps doing the same thing and it all keeps on peeling off, that's the reason I asked the question. I've heard them like three times and we've got all these different colors of paint up there, so.
I will definitely pass along the comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Harry, go ahead.
Rich, turn the, your.
Questions about entrance and, and leaving the site. From, on the Central Street side, you have an arrow indicating exiting the property. Would that be a right turn only, considering the type of traffic we have there?
Yeah, so currently, we weren't proposing kind of any signed restrictions on the movements. You know, I do think, given kind of the traffic flow, as well as the solid double line, I think it insinuates a right-hand turn. But again, the, the project doesn't propose on Central any, any restrictions to that movement.
I bring it up only because the property across the street, gas station, has restrictions to that effect, because of the traffic flow. And similarly, on the Washington Street side, you have an exit with a turn, obviously. That's a pretty congested corner, and would it make sense to make everyone leave on Central?
I think, I think, again, we're proposing a right out on Washington Street, which is, you know, a pretty safe movement. There's definitely, you know, again, this is a busy intersection, I've driven it, I'm sure everyone here has driven it. But to eliminate that ability to make a right out, especially in the times, we have to remember, the bank's not open just during the busiest times, right? So we want to give people the ability in times where that movement may be easier to get out. So again, I think if it were really, if it was forcing left movements, I think it, maybe that would be a more appropriate approach, but given that it's a right out, you know, I think it would, I think it would really harm the site to force everyone to kind of go out to Central Street.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any comments from the public on this particular site? If not, I believe you would be prudent to ask for a continuance at this time, and we can see if we can do that.
Yes, that would be our request.
So made.
As well, what, what date?
24th's getting filled out.
There's minor changes, I believe that, you know, we'll be looking at, if, if you, you know, we've done three projects on the 25th, but it looks like it's going to be three approvals, you know, with recommendations. I believe that, you know, these are minor, and minor things, we can look at changing it, possibly have a recommend, a draft recommendation of approval for you for the 25th, January 25th. How long will it take you to revise these?
You know, I think, I think it'd be great if we could, if we could meet maybe next week, or maybe meet before the end of the year and try to get you something early, January.
Okay. Okay, yeah, January, January 25th.
Could I, could I make one other suggestion? To incorporate with what happens on the, the other two corners, the gas station and the, the bank across the street, they have lawn areas, they've, it's all lawn on the corner of Washington and Central. Would it be possible to just put like a, a lawn area as opposed to junipers and mulch and shrubbery on that corner?
We have, we have a really tight space, there's a lot of equipment out there, and there's a pretty steep grade change, it kind of climbs, climbs up.
It would be, it would look nicer on the entire corner there, if it was lawn, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I can, we could definitely look, maybe there's some other plantings we can incorporate. My concern with lawn would just be, it may not, just given how small of an area, it may not, in the long run, you know, be the best choice in there.
Well, they do, they do do a nice job on the two other corners with lawns and take care of it quite nicely, and it does make a softer effect for that entire corner.
Maybe your landscape architect can be in on the meeting with us and we can discuss the lawn area, it's at the corner, so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Actually, that would help with visibility.
Sir, 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 excuse me, come on up to the microphone, please, if you're going to speak, thank you.
I'd like to say.
Press the button.
Press the button, sir.
I'd like to say-
Press the button, sir. And set your name and address, thank you.
All right, I've lived in Stoughton for 35 years, okay?
Your name and address, sir.
My name's Charlie Studabaker, 60 Grove Street. I'm on the agenda today, too. That is the worst intersection in Stoughton, other than the one over by Jimmy's Market. That is horrible, driving into and out of, and there's been so many businesses in there in the last 34, 35 years, I can't tell you, okay? Nobody's designed it right, okay? There's been no business successful in there, okay? And that's all I got to say. But I've been in Stoughton for 34, 35 years, and I've never seen anything successful there. There was a gas station there when I first moved in here, there's been cleaners, there's been all kinds of stuff in there, and nothing has ever succeeded because of the driving, okay? So I don't know what, I don't know, this gentleman here is an engineer, okay? I don't know what the problem is, but I don't see anything successful coming out of that corner.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a motion for the request of continuance?
Motion to continue?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, we'll see you on the 25th.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, we're going into general business. First item on the business is 1515 West Street, map 36, lot 4, map 37, lot 4. Chapter 61B, right of first refusal, votes may be taken.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the property is part of Chapter 61B, which is, it's under recreation. It is being sold, and under state law, the planning board, the conservation commission, and the state are also listed, and we have a, and the town select board has a right of first refusal. If it's deemed that, you know, this is a piece of property that you think that we should look at trying to find a way to fund and are exercising our right of first refusal. I will let you know that if you look at the thing, it's, the buyer is intending on keeping the use of the property recreation and the current use, so their intention is to maintain the 61B. So my recommendation to you is that if they're maintaining the current use of 61B and not changing it, then the new owner, if in the future they wish to take it out of chapter land, then for development purposes, then we would get another notice, the town would get another notice for right of first refusal prior to any development.
So even if they're going to maintain ownership themselves, that they want to take it out of recreation, use the town would have the right to buy it off of them? Or first, I mean, I don't understand, I know the right of first refusal comes when the land is for sale, but I don't think they would have a right to purchase the property if the owner does not put it up for sale. He may, he could take it out of Chapter 61B but not put it up for sale, he'd have to pay his rear taxes and whatever other requirements are part of that 61B, but I don't think the town would then have an opportunity to purchase it. I just, I mean, unless there's something, I'm reading, as I did look over 61B and I did read it, I didn't see anything in there that said that. I thought, what I understood was, the town would have the purchase power now that it's up for sale, but they wouldn't have the purchase power, I don't think they have a purchase. Once it's owned by the owner, if the owner himself wants to take it out of that, then I don't think they're that right. I could be wrong. That's something we have to get in training to look at, but, you know. This is a nice piece of property, I think is something that I would like to see kept in the recreational thing in the town of Stoughton. Do I believe the town of Stoughton should own it? No, but that's just my own personal opinion, because I think the town doesn't know how to manage property, but again, that's a personal opinion of mine. Not saying that that's the opinion of the board, but there is, there's issues along those lines. That being said, what are we looking to do? What is the board, or what is the select board, or what is the town looking for us to do?
The select board would like, you know, your, the planning board's recommendation, whether we should look to exercise the right of first refusal or not.
Are we going to hear the comments anywhere else on the board about it?
I have no idea what the property is. 1515 West Street, you have a-
Nine acres, what's it, nine acres of land or something?
It's presently a horse farm, right?
Right, but they just, the existing, there's a new house that was built on the property, I think back in the 90s or something, it was pretty large, 5,000 square foot, plus or minus house that exists on the property, and it's being used presently as a horse farm, horse, you know, horse barns and stuff on the property, nine plus acres. It's a nice, really nice piece of property that, you know, would be nice in the town, but I'm not sure what-
And it says for recreational purposes as currently used, so they're going to continue it as a horse farm?
They didn't say it, they just said-
Is that adjacent to the park?
No.
With the trails?
It's right here. No, no.
It's- But aims for this long pond and the stream that feeds the pond.
It's across from Gibson Way.
Right. It's on the west side of West Street.
Yeah.
It's, it's the surrounding property around this house.
Richard, is this something that CPC can fund or not? I'm sorry? Is this something the CPC can fund or not?
It would have to be as open space, I think.
Yeah, it's $3 million.
We've got enough.
But I'm saying, I don't know whether the town would have to go after a tax levy or something like that with $3 million. That's why I'm wondering whether the CPC would be able to come up with something on that.
Considering that it has a lot of buildings on it and a very large barn, is that something the town wants to consider owning and maintaining?
That's, that's where, that's my opinion is, I don't know whether the town can do that.
I think it's biting off too much, quite honestly, based on our past history.
We have enough-
We had a better track record, you're right, but we don't.
Correct.
We have enough problems taking care of the land that we have already. And then if you were to buy this and someone's to run their business on town property, then it becomes the liability issue, so.
I need a clarification. 61B says essentially, it's a recreational facility?
Correct, so it's basically recreational facility, a private recreational facility-
Private recreational facility.
Right, but they get, there's a certain amount of tax breaks they get from the town by running it in that type of a fashion, so that they're not, they're getting a tax, a tax rebate, but a tax reduction, I guess, is what you would consider it.
Right. So if they want to sell it, we have right of first refusal, provided they don't change the use or they do change the use?
We have the right of first refusal either way, when the property goes up for sale. So, and right now it's up for sale and there's an offer, a PNS for $3.8 million, I believe is what it is. So the town would either have to match that or prove that the appraisal isn't worth the $3.8 million, and then, you know, buy it for some other property cost. There would have to be an appraisal done that would have to be approved by the town, because the town can't purchase anything without a certain type of an appraisal on it.
So, so does the 61B go with the title that he purchases?
No, that's, they're looking at, my understanding is, is that the new owners wish, base sort of says here, they intend to continue the recreation purposes. I read that as they're intending on keeping it in the Chapter 61B. So if in the future, that person were to look at wanting to sell it, then we would have, we would be talking, we would have another right of first refusal.
So he's purchasing it with the 61B in the, in the, in the purchase? I mean, he can't, it's a little confusing here. Intends, you know, intends, I intend, you know, all kinds of things, you know? But whether I'm going to do it or not, it doesn't matter, you know?
I understand, but if he did have to, if he was going to change it from the 61B to something else after he purchased it, the town would be notified.
So he's, he's purchasing it and it's going to be 61B when he purchases it?
As of right now, nobody's notifying the town that that's changing.
Okay.
There would have to be a notification to the town that the 61B is going to change.
So he can't, he can't purchase it and then come to a, I mean, not as a 61B, that's included in, in the legal part of purchasing this property?
The owner, present owner right now, before he transfers it, could remove the 61B.
But he would have to ask us.
He would notify us.
Right.
He wouldn't have to ask us, he would notify us.
Okay, so when the, when this other person purchases this thing, it's still going to be a 61B inclusive?
Unless he notifies us differently. My understanding-
I'm just trying to understand, why would somebody want to purchase it? Are they going to continue whatever operation is going on with these bonds? Is that what it is?
I have one sentence, "The buyer intends to continue the use of the property for recreational purposes as currently used." That's all it states here. I have no idea.
Okay. I have a question regarding the broad word of recreational use. Does that mean to get the horses and bring in some motorbikes?
That's in the bio, that's in the law, we can't, that's just the-
I'm just asking.
Yeah, you know, I don't know.
It's what other, whatever is allowed under 61B.
What you just read, it says intends to use it as it's currently used. That's fairly precise.
Correct.
I think we should let them sell it and continue with this horse farm.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this?
So basically, we're just saying whether we're interested in purchasing-
It's a recommendation to the board of selectmen.
So we need to, right, they're asking us to vote on a recommendation to the board of selectmen, on whether they should exercise their right to purchase it or not.
Right.
I think that's really what it is, it's an up or down recommendation from us.
Right.
I'm not in favor of purchasing it.
So let's make a motion one way or another, somebody make a motion to either purchase it or not to purchase it.
To recommend to the board of-
To recommend to the board of selectmen to purchase or not purchase.
I make the motion that we make the recommendation to not purchase the property to the select board.
Second.
Can I have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have a five to nothing for not to purchase recommendation. Next item on the agenda is Pine Estates subdivision lots 1 through 34, votes may be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, a closing attorney contacted us regarding one of the lots in the subdivision. It was approved back in the 80s, and it, all the houses are built, it's fully constructed. For some reason, there's no, nowhere in the chain of title shows that we ever released the covenant, so I am recommending that we release the covenant for the entire subdivision so we don't have to do this lot by lot by lot whenever anyone wants to sell one of these things. So therefore, I'm recommending that, that you vote to release the covenant for the subdivision, lots 1 through 34, and as revised, lots 1A through 34A. It's in, it's in our, it's in the lot release.
I'm reading.
Where is this actually located? As I tried to look it up, couldn't find it.
Oh.
What street?
It's Kenny. William, William Kelly Road?
Yeah.
That's been done for you.
Yeah, that's what they're trying to say, we just never, the paperwork just never followed.
It's all of these, it's all of these lots right here.
On William Kelly?
Along William Kelly Road. It's all, it's-
All right, can I have a, can I have a motion to, I guess to approve this lot release of lots 1 through 34?
Motion to release lots as suggested by our town planner.
Yeah, I have a second to that.
Second.
It's already in the-
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll sign it after, sign the document afterwards.
Also on the agenda, we can sign as the approval for the subdivision on Ol Page Street, that for the Stoughton Logistics Park has expired, it was not appealed, and they have revised the plans, so I have the Mylar for signature tonight.
Okay. Meeting minutes of 10:26, 23. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve or disapprove them, or any comments?
Motion to approve, minutes of the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Correspondents, notice of public hearing, Nofar County, I've read through this, I'm not, what are they trying to get at here?
Actually, I, we can go to that.
Other than telling me that they've got, that the state says we can do things by remote thing, and two pages on that, what are we doing?
Discontinuance on the other side. The correspondence they just received.
Can we get that?
It's not for this?
No.
How you been lately?
Hillary, is this the discontinuance? The county notice, is this the discontinuance for Ol Page Street?
I mean, that's what it looks like to me, is it just what-
So, it's, there's a small triangular piece.
We're going to discontinue what to create, so that that, we were going to extend it so that that triangular piece isn't inaccessible, right?
Right, right, so there was, there's a discontinuance of a portion of right of way to get to that triangular piece on, this is not on Stoughton Logistics side.
It's on this side.
This is on the other side of 24.
Okay.
If I had the parcel maps up, it would be a little easier.
Didn't that get voted on at town meeting?
It did, it's gone through town meeting. I'm not sure if it came to this board previously, but there's-
No, I thought we had a special meeting, we had a side hearing on that, preliminary hearing on it.
And now it's finally having a hearing with the county commissioners.
Okay.
So that's the correspondence.
So that's all, we, that, we just, okay, so they're going to have that discussion going forward, that's fine. Other business, it's the only other business I wanted to, I'm sorry, is there anything from any of the public here, that I see people here that, that may want to speak tonight, or is anybody here? No? Okay. The only other business that I have tonight, that I personally have, maybe some other people do, is about possibly changing the time of the meeting going forward to 6:00 PM. And I think, I know there's some people are okay with it, some people are not, so I'd like to put it out there as a discussion to see where we can go with this, if we can.
I'm a hard no on 6 o'clock.
Okay.
I'm going to do 6:30. I mean, 6 is fine, but 6:30 I think would be a little more accommodating.
Paul?
I'm fine with whatever you want to do.
You've got nothing else to do, that's why.
I had the wolf out of here, but real quick to get here, but, no, whatever you want.
All right, I think what we could do in order to maybe accommodate if people may be running a little bit late or whatever, is to reverse the meeting and take up general business and any type of, that type of stuff at the beginning of the meeting, get that out of the way, and then if we get to the point where votes need to be taken or other stuff, we can kind of do that as the meeting goes on.
Well, sometimes it's only one, maybe one or two items, and, you know, taking the, voting the minutes, and then five minutes later, you're ready to go, I mean-
I'll give 6:30 a shot.
Okay, let's, let's try 6:30 and see how that works.
It's a compromise, I'll tell you.
Well, you're good.
Because I, I need to, I have to very soon do the meeting calendar and reserve the room, and I, so I will, I will look at reserving it for 6:30. If we have a problem, we can always start changing it.
Okay.
I have one other request, since we're talking about time. Could we change the date from, a day from Thursday to Wednesday? The reason I ask is, I've been a member of a couple of organizations that happen to meet on Thursday, and since I've been a member of this board now a little over a year, I've missed all but one meeting. And so I asked them to change their meeting, and they've been doing this thing for 60 or 70 years, and they- or 70 years, and they said flat out...
So has on this board. So has on this board.
So, is there anything golden about Thursday for us meeting here?
Other than it's the, the town employees work late on Thursday nights, that's part of the reason for...
Okay.
It works out that this happens to be...
Never mind that.
In other words, they have to leave work at 4 o'clock, come back again at 6:30 or 7 o'clock, and move on. That's the reason with Thursday nights, is the nights that all these meetings get crammed in.
Give the answer to my question, thank you.
Plus, we wouldn't get the council seat.
Maybe we should change the, the town's schedule.
And it can be sometimes a conflict with other meetings. Like, I can tell you right now, you can't do it on Tuesdays.
Understood.
That's the reason for Thursday.
That's a good reason, I certainly accept that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Richard.
Okay, so, I'll look at, we'll look at trying the, the 6:30, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And everyone needs to stay, wants to close, we have a lot of signatures.
Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So made.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've asked if the public had anything to say already.
My, my, at the top notch, on the agenda?
Excuse me?
803 Washington Street.
This is the planning board, what, what meeting were you?
I was asked to be at 7:30 by zone.
By what, for what, what board, though?
There were, there were three different meetings, there was a conservation commission meeting, and there was a board of appeals meeting, and planning board. This is the planning board.
Yeah, I was asked to be here for expanding the menu.
Expansion of a menu?
Yeah, our menu.
Oh, the board of health.
Okay.
That would have been downstairs.
It might still be meeting.
I was asked to be here for zoning meeting at 7:30.
That was in this room that already...
It was in the room back here.
They, what, they...
Yeah.
No, I think they broke from it.
Done and gone.
Are they still upstairs?
We don't know, sorry.
I, I, I don't know, they're in the second, are you texting Sean?
I'm going to check, it'll be there.
Larry.
You missed the meeting.
Again, can I have the motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So we don't have to say the sign there?